Good evening and welcome to the public. Sorry. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Kristi Monk and I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of a hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding the proposed permit action. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the proposed reissuance of the National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit Number ALS 000027 to the City of Hoover for the municipal separate storm sewer system, also known as MS4, owned and operated and maintained by the City of Hoover. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit action. In addition to oral testimony, the department also will consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public hearing. Public comment period, sorry. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On September 11th, 2023, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record at these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determination, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making the permit decision and must base the determination only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to ADA by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. The proceeding tonight is not in open form as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit action. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements were previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit action and develop a response to comments for the draft permit. The hearing record, final permit determination, and response to comments will be posted on the department's, to the department's e-file system on its website. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted to the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance for persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's Water Division, then any elected officials or their representatives who have registered to speak. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered this evening. I now recognize Ms. Kami Ashmore to present a statement on behalf of the department's Water Division.
Good evening. My name is Kami Ashmore and I'm an Environmental Engineering Specialist Senior in the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System or MS4 Section of the Stormwater Management Branch in the Water Division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. The department's Water Division is also represented this evening by James Carlson, Chief of the Stormwater Management Branch, Devon Jenkins, Chief of the UIC in the MS4 Section, Melanie Radcliffe, Environmental Engineering Specialist Senior in the MS4 Section. On behalf of the department, we thank you for your participation in the permitting process for the City of Hoover's National Pluton Discharge Elimination System, our NPDES, MS4 Permit Number ALS 000027. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Water Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's water pollution control and water quality regulations. The department also has authority to implement federal water pollution control regulations. The MS4 Section regulates permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for the discharge of storm water from the MS4s within the state of Alabama. The draft NPDES permit reissuance proposes authorization for stormwater discharges from the MS4 owned, operated, and maintained by the City of Hoover to water bodies located within the corporate boundaries of the City of Hoover and require the discharge of pollutants to be reduced to the maximum extent practicable. The permitee is currently operating under the administratively decided MS4 Phase 1 NPDES permit. The department has made a preliminary determination that the reissuance of the NPDES permit is consistent with the ADA Water Quality Program Regulations and federal MS4 stormwater regulations. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and repeated. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no cards indicating that any elected officials registered to speak at this time, so we will now proceed to receive the comments from members of the public. And please remember, if anybody has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your timeframe for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for replacement in the record. Okay, first half. William Carey. Junior. And step to the microphone, state your name, and if you're representing anybody, please.
My name is William Carey and I've been a Hoover resident for 31 years and my address is 2117 Southland Circle. I'm here speaking on behalf of Indian Valley Lake and also Southlake Estates. So the first photograph there, the first photograph will show the poor water quality that we're experiencing in Indian Valley Lake. There's a large sploof of turbidity that's well out into, beyond the middle of that lake. Eventually, that settles and becomes sediment in the lake. So there's, I've been involved in meetings with the city and city staff, city council for three years. Some of these gentlemen here have been involved for six years. And one thing that we have in common is we're not making progress. Some of these issues have been going on and been reported, but we're not getting responses. So my main purpose is to focus on water quality, turbidity, and pollution that we're consistently getting into the lake. City of Hoover has designated Indian Valley Lake as a catch basin to protect the Caba River. So that, we think, is a very important situation to protect the Caba River, but we also got to be very careful what we're putting into the Indian Valley Lake. So we are experiencing things from the stormwater street drain system that is, we're picking up a lot of pollution. There's points of discharge into the lake that were not included on Hoover's engineering drawings, on the GIS drawings. Those points of discharge have caused massive erosion, ditches. In 2022, the ditch was six feet deep and took 10 feet wide. All of that earth is being transferred into Indian Valley Lake. So I'm not even going to try to hit all the stuff that's in there. I'm just trying to hit the high points. But when we bought the adjacent lot in 1997, we could see three-pound bass in there. Now we can see mother deer giving birth to baby deer. So it's a large slew that is filled with sediment. That slew provided lake access for a vacant lot that we had purchased in 97. Now it's, we don't have lake access. We've got sediment for 90 feet or so in a slew. So the, this erosion ditch, drainage ditch that's caused by the city's street stormwater system is running wild and it's continuing to expand. So it's putting at risk the city sanitary sewer system. There's large rocks or small boulders coming down that ditch that are impacting on. The erosion has exposed household PVC sewer pipes where it goes into the main tap. So we've already experienced sewer spills and they've been reported. So the other thing that will happen, sometimes we meet with engineers, but we get a report back with a denial from the city attorney saying we can't do work on private property. But the problem is not on private property. The property is in, the problem is in the easement where the city's sewer system is in that easement and in the same easement is this gigantic ditch. You'll see it in the pictures that huge there. So that third, second picture from the left, there's a worker there that's six feet tall and you see it's 10 feet wide and it's up to the top of his head. The third picture is my slew with turbidity all the way up to the mouth of the slew. The fourth picture shows you when the rain recedes, there's nothing but sediment. So and we're experiencing this not just on my property, but on property all over this lake. Forty-one seconds left. So the point I'd like to make is it's in Hoover Standard Operating Procedure for Drainage System Maintenance and it's also in the SWMPP and the MS4 from 2018 to 2022 that says that the city, after a major storm, will remove debris and they will do an annual inspection. I have not, I've been there 31 years, I'm not seeing annual inspections. So I don't think that I have an expectation that the city should be, as a resident, should be granting this permit until they start living up to the requirements.
Thank you.
He's going to leave them up there. Okay.
Are those pictures being used by somebody else, too?
Number two.
Okay. Number two. Okay.
His number, number two.
It's called Economy of Scale.
All right. You're, oh my.
Oh, yes.
I'm not going to try it.
Just Larry will work.
Okay. But say the whole name, your whole name for the record.
Wojcicki.
Okay. Will you spell it?
Larry Wojcicki. I live at 2112 Swan Lake Cove in Hoover and we love Alabama and its natural beauty. We've been deeply involved with the Birmingham Zoo and are primary contributors to Alabama Wild, which is an educational environmental habitat which shows the importance of conserving natural beauty and native species. We have contributed, we have made other contributions to other environmental and conservation areas. But our major concern is the ability and maybe the desire and the will of the City of Hoover to meet applicable environmental laws and regulations regarding stormwater management. That is a picture from my balcony and we have that every time we have a half an inch of rain to an inch of rain, that happens. And so it's an ongoing sediment. The issue is that the permitee is, according to the NPDES draft, the permitee owned, maintains structural controls. The structural control shall be operated in a manner to reduce the discharge of pollutants to the MEP. Evidence for the SOPs are not posted on the website because they are in an appendix. Veterans Lake 1, a city-owned structure, is often inundated with runoff from parking lots and streets. If we receive again a half an inch of rain, silt, debris, and sediment go into the Indian Valley Lake. Veteran Lake 1 drains into Acton Creek and into Valley Lake. On June 22nd, it was documented that erosion was observed between the parking lot and Veterans Lake. This again set sediment and turbidity into the lake. NPSDES draft says the permitee shall maintain an inventory of structural controls and maintain a tracking system for inspections and maintenance of controlled structures. But the city does not, does not inspect or report information on non-city-owned structures. At least two detention ponds failed during the 2018-23 permit years, and that was Magnolia Grove and Village of Brock Gap. Hoover Building Code Article 9, Stormwater Detention, has been in effect for 25 years and requires detention facilities to be inspected by the owner and problems reported to the city. The city has the information to do an inventory, track problems, and therefore reduce pollutants, but, and we've made the city aware of recent construction in our area that has increased pollution problem in Valley Lake and the Southlake area. NPDES draft, arrangement for temporary protection of preventive measures to catch basins where feasible. Stormwater MPP 2021 does not address this. The city has identified two lakes as catch basins for the city in the Future Hoover Report, Indian Valley Lake and Paradise Lake. These lakes flow directly into the Cahaaba River and are filled with pollution, including sediment, debris, debris, and on occasion sewage. Indian Valley Lake receives water from two city structured controls, Veterans Lake Park 1 and 2, while Paradise receives water from Patton Creek and is nearly the terminus for that creek. If either of these two lakes or their dams fail, the Cahaaba will be devastated. MS4 does not mention this. These lakes are not mentioned. The October 6, 2021 storm, where we had a nine-foot surge in our lake, is not mentioned. The long-term abuse of these lakes is, only demands a long-term solution, but a temporary protection should be provided. The city claims no responsibilities for these catch basins based on them being private lakes, but however, they've done a program with River Chase Country Club. And the road on the dam and the sanitary sewer were hoovy, but the dam was not. The HOA and the country club could not afford to repair it. The city annexed it and estimated $30 million to fix it, and this was done under the guise of protecting the Cahaaba and recruitment of tax dollars over decades. Shortly after the resolution was passed, the country club was sold to a national golf Residents have requested and have meetings with the city staff but find them ineffective. NPDES 2023 says annually seek and consider public input in the development, revision, and implementation of stormwater management. Residents have made public comments to the city council, again ineffective. The city has not made full reports because the appendices are not posted on the website. Property owners on Indian Valley Lake have experienced large property damage. Repairs to their lake fronts have been over a quarter of a million dollars. As chairman of the Architectural Review Committee and board member for 800-plus homeowners, we witness the issues of pollution on the lake. There is a great need to address the inadequate and, in many cases, incorrect placement of stormwater management infrastructure. Our issues can be solved for significantly less than the $3 million that have a greater impact on the Cahaaba River. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I now recognize Mr. Mark Davis. Are you using eyes, too?
They'll take them down.
I'll take them down.
No. Follow along in my presentation.
Yeah?
Ready? Thank you. That is a quote from the city engineers of Hoover. The second page of my presentation that you got just gives you an aerial view of what Indian Valley Lake looks like in relationship to the Cahaaba Valley, I mean Cahaaba River, and also I-65. The two red lines that you see on there represent, the one to the left is a standpipe that allows water to overflow from Indian Valley Lake into Cahaaba River. The second one to the right is the spillway. There are six, I'm sorry, the seven, six-foot diameter pipes there that act as a spillway to dump water into the lake. So when Larry said we had nine feet of water in there, we had a lot of water in there. The next page, let me give you a little history of Indian Valley Lake. Built in 1973 as a private lake, it was a 110-acre lake with seven miles of shoreline. It now is about 100 acres due to silting from stormwater runoff. Indian Valley Lake is the largest lake in Hoover and flows directly into the Caba River. We have serious stormwater runoff from Southlake, from Sandpiper, from Stane Park, Indian Valley Road, from Sandpiper subdivision and Valleydale Road. Indian Valley Lake is designated as a catch basin. The next page, now the problem. In Southlake Estates, all sewage flows from the homes down to the lake. Okay? There's called into a basin and then it gets pumped back up to Southlake Parkway. There are 60 sewage manhole covers that surround Indian Valley Lake. Indian Valley Lake sits at about a 425-foot level elevation. Most sewage manhole covers sit between 426 feet and 435 feet level. There are nine sewage pumping stations around Southlake. On my property, I have three manhole covers. One sits at the 426-foot level. One sewage pumping station borders my property. There are two pumps with a backup generator. Telemetry to the city informs the city there is a problem with the pumps. The Hoover's sewage pumping station is very antiquated. It's been there since the, since the 80s. So if you look at the next page, I just want to give you an aerial view of what the lake looks like. Area 1, 2, and 3, area 1 is my house. We have silt there. Area 2 is Jean's house and area 3 is Larry's house. The biggest problem is area 4 on the map. That's where everything from Stane Park flows down in there. And that whole area right there in the red is all silted in. You can't even get a boat up in there now. Okay? Area 5 is runoff that comes in from Valleydale Road. If you take the next page, you'll see a blow-up of the dam and the spillway. The red circle there is a standpipe that allows water overflow from lake into there. So any sewage, debris, mud, all that stuff goes right down in there. And then we have the spillway on the right. Okay, here's my problems with the sewage runoff. I don't have much time, sorry. In 2017, I noticed sewage coming from a manhole cover on my property and spilling in the lake. The two pumps failed, the backup generator failed, and the telemetry failed. I requested for water testing for E coli and that, and that line be spread on my property. After the first sewage spill, I talked to the previous homeowner's landscaper. They told me that happened all the time. They have seen sewage, waste, and toilet paper flowing into the lake. The pumps failed five times in the seven years I've lived there. Sewage basically settles, oh wait, here's one point. The sewage was dumped in the lake one time, but it was so high, it was too high to count for a whole week coming out of that manhole cover. Fish, turtles, waterfowl eat off the bottom and we eat the fish out of the lake and we swim in the lake. Generally, our lake floods over three feet and the lake water covers many of the manhole covers in our subdivision. So that means all that lake water is flowing into the sewage manhole covers. The October 2021 500-year flood dumped about nine feet of water in the lake, as Larry said, and much of that flowed right into the manhole covers, sewage manhole covers. I have serious stormwater runoff on my property. I've had five sinkholes open up on my cul-de-sac in my subdivision. Two are in a sewage manhole cover and one is a sewage pipe. For the sewage pipe, I requested the city engineers to conduct a remote visual examination to ensure the integrity of the pipe because I was worried about sagging of the pipe and cracking and dumping sewage in my cul-de-sac. Stormwater runs underground and erodes the water near the sewage manholes, pipes, and the manhole covers. Bottom line is the solution, pollution is not a good answer. We need help. We need, we need a better system of maintaining control of the sewage in Southlake because it all runs down the lake. And the problem is, if that dam fails, okay, the sewage pipe runs under that road. That gets all dumped into the Cahaaba River. Then if you lose electricity and everything, then all the pumps, all the sewage in the subdivision runs down to the bottom and then it's going to end up flowing into the lake. So thank you very much for your time. By the way, my name's Mark Davis. I didn't say my name.
Okay.
Thank you.
I now recognize Katie Thomas.
I don't have any pictures. I do want to talk about post-construction stormwater management and qualifying new development and redevelopment, Part 2B, 5B5, which allows permitees to set their own timeline for adopting an ordinance. My objection to offering the city additional opportunity and more time to adopt an ordinance is because of the past performance. In the 2018 SWMPP, a goal was to develop and adopt an ordinance for stormwater management, and it was to be completed by February 1, 2020. The 2019-20 MS4 Annual Report states, and I quote, "In December 2019, the city implemented revisions to Appendix 2 subdivision regulations, Appendix A design standards, Article 9 Stormwater Management, to incorporate new post-construction stormwater management requirements for qualifying new development and redevelopment." I was pleased to see this and immediately I went to Hoover MuniCode to read more. The most recent update in that code continuing till today was 1998. Nothing showed from 2019. The revised subdivision regulations were and remain buried in a 700-page appendix, but it had a date, December 9, 2019. So what happened December 9, 2019? A rather contentious committee meeting. So I quote now from the Planning and Zoning Committee, which met on December 9, 2019. "Mr. Shaw thanked the residents and representatives for being there and stated that they can direct their questions to the council. He stated that these are regulations, not an ordinance, that these regulations literally change every month. In this situation, they could easily come back and look at some of the concerns next month if this was passed." So to review, in 2018, the SWMP had a goal to develop and adopt an ordinance for stormwater management under the heading of Post-Construction Stormwater Management. The deadline was February 1, 2020. In December of 2019, Planning and Zoning had a meeting. The product of that meeting was cited in the MS4 as evidence for meeting the 2020 ordinance deadline. Former council member Mike Shaw clearly states that this is not an ordinance. No stormwater ordinance, then the SWMPP goal was not met nor were the conditions of the permit. These new subdivision regulations remain buried in the 2020 MS4 Appendix E. This is not okay. We'll probably never know whose brainchild this was. Clearly, multiple folks were involved. It was not easy to figure this out, probably by design. There must be consequences. This draft must not reward the city for previous failures. This draft must not reward the city for previous failures." One more point, um, the NPDES 2023 Draft Permit, Part 2, 2B, 1, annually seek and consider public input in the development and revision and implementation of the SWMPP. A quintessential example of how little interest the city has in getting public input is the response to an email I sent on Friday, July 14, 2023, to the city engineer requesting a copy of the draft permit. The response was, "Good morning, Ms. Thomas. The new draft permit has been developed by ADM for the city to review. We can download you a copy. Please make the request through the city clerk's office. I have copied Ms. Harris to assist you with your request. Thanks and have a great day." Chris. This clearly states that only the city was to review the permit. The process is obstructive. Requests over, um, Hoover docs take weeks to months. There's a research fee and a page fee. Public involvement is not welcome. Taken together with other facts, for example, non-compliance with at least 10 other requirements in the NPDES, I do not believe the city has the capacity, will, or desire, excuse me, to meet the applicable environmental laws, rules, and regulations relevant to this permit. I hope that ADM can help us live a safer, healthier, in a healthier city with a clean water future. And we really appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you.
That's your weight training. Yeah. I now recognize Matthew Winter.
That's me.
Okay.
My name is Matthew Winter. Uh, my concerns are generally about how Hoover handles its responsibility related to MS4 and more specifically construction sites, stormwater runoff, and the NPDES draft permit. NPDES draft requires procedures for site plan review and ensures effective erosion and sediment controls. The site plan may be prioritized based on size and location within priority watersheds. The plan review, the plan review process will consider potential water quality impacts. NPDES draft requirements requires inspection in construction sites. Hoover has an erosion and sediment control ordinance. The Hoover 2021-2022 MS4 states that all active construction sites are inspected monthly. In a letter to Hoover Mayor, Baccato, ADM questions the frequency and more so effectiveness of inspections at the preserve. The city engineer and other staff stated that the city was conducting inspections at the preserve. Further, that the responsibility for compliance is with ADM, not the city. There are three issues of concern. First, the city is supposed to inspect and record inspections with legal authority to, to the developer, with legal authority to make the developer follow BMPs. The city has a responsibility, however, if the developer does not comply with the city interventions, that the city can request ADM assistance. The relationship is a refer, not a defer. The concerns and data that ADM presented was not addressed by the city. Instead, the city deferred responsibility to ADM. My second point. In sworn testimony, the subdivision inspector for Hoover stated that software used to document inspections did not work properly. Has Hoover disclosed these problems to ADM and is there a plan to address them? It is not identified in the MS4. It appears the city of Hoover has not followed its procedures to stop the polluted stormwater leaving the preserve and other sites. Third, while there's a proposed consent order for a site, ADM does not inspect the site. Since Hoover is not enforcing compliance, this results in a complete lack of checks and balances intended to limit sediment erosion and ultimately pollution entering public waterways and causing property damage. The CEO of Spectrum Environmental stated in a sworn testimony, uh, when presented with a picture of stormwater leaving the preserve development site and entering Hurricane Branch, that he did not need to sample the water for analysis to know the water leaving the preserve was polluted. This is on page 123 of his deposition. You will be provided that. His company was employed by US Steel, the developer of the preserve, to conduct inspections similar to Hoover and ADM, intended to ensure compliance. Spectrum has failed to record water quality samples on most inspections, even though they indicated they were taken on the inspection forms. Instead of presenting an outcome, instead of presenting outcome data, the city repeats text from the, the stormwater management plan in the MS4. In other parts, the MS4 completely ignores portions of the stormwater management plan and permit. Based on the city's past performance, I have no confidence that it can meet these requirements in the draft permit. I would like to see ADM hold the city of Hoover accountable. A related issue is the requirement in the permit for annual reporting. The NPDES requires annual reporting about qualifying active construction sites. The requirement was in a previous NPDES permit. There is no reference to this in the current stormwater management program plan. The MS4 annual reports for four years, 2018 to 2022, represents dots on a map as the inventory. This is impossible to interpret. The, the appendices, the, in the appendices, letters to developers and contractors are presented, however, there are numerous errors. Most obvious is letters included from the wrong year. The error rate is about 25%. In those four years, only one letter went to US Steel related to the preserve from Hoover. That was in March of 2021. US Steel has received numerous communications about negative conditions and at least two consent orders for the preserve. This reduces any confidence that the city can meet its requirements for the NPDES, NPDES draft permit. The bottom lines are, the city does not follow its ordinance's procedures. The stormwater management program does not address all aspects of the NPDES. The MS4 does not address all aspects of the NPDES or stormwater management plan program. The city fails to report accurately directly to ADM and in the MS4. The inspections may not be occurring according to scheduled requirements. The inspections are not being recorded accurately. The inspections are not leading to consequences or compliance, and the city is not, to the maximum extent, practical doing anything about pollution entering the MS4. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, I now recognize Philip Corley. Philip Corley. Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name is Philip Corley and I'm the city attorney for the city of Hoover, Alabama. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to reiterate the city's legal concerns related to requirements included by ADM within the proposed NPDES permit draft for the city of Hoover's MS4, which according to federal law is only the system owned or operated by the city and not drainage in the city. What you've heard about mostly tonight are private drainage issues. The, many of the city's comments and objections involve legal issues and not technical issues. It's the city's legal position that certain technical requirements within the permit draft violate Alabama law and should be removed. These requirements go far beyond EPA requirements and add enforcement layers not required by law which violate Alabama law. ADM has modified the city's permit language to change some components from optional to mandatory and to add new requirements not supported by federal law which could wrongfully be interpreted by private parties as creating an obligation to utilize public resources on private property in violation of state laws. This position is based upon Alabama Code Section 11-89C-1E, which requires ADM to limit the scope of its programs, including the contents of this draft NPDES permit, and I quote, "to include only those rules, regulations, and/or aspects that are absolutely required to satisfy the Clean Water Act as specifically set out in the Code of Federal Regulations," end quote. This position is also based on Section 94 of the Alabama Constitution, which prohibits municipalities from spending public money on private property absent a public purpose. City representatives have tried to work with ADM representatives on multiple occasions to resolve these issues, but have received no response and no justification for the technical changes which deviate from federal law regulations. On June 10, 2022, in a written comment to ADM's reissuance of permits for the cities of Estevia Hills, Mountain Brook, Irondale, and Tarrant, Hoover objected to ADM's requirements to the extent they required a municipality to maintain waterways and tributaries on private property, including but not limited to the requirement that a municipality enter private property for the removal of trash. The creation of such an obligation would violate Alabama law. Alabama law allows municipalities to be held liable for damages caused by their negligence in the operation and maintenance of stormwater drains within, within their control if the municipality does not properly maintain such drains. To require a municipality to remove trash from waterways would greatly expand this and could bankrupt local governments. ADM responded to the city's objection by stating, quote, "This requirement may have been misinterpreted as the draft permit is not requiring the city to spend public money on private property, as this could be accomplished through other means such as cleanups and local partnerships with schools, environmental, environmental groups, et cetera," end quote. If, as they say, the draft permit language is unclear, then the language should be amended in the comment period. However, ADM has made no changes to the draft permits of these cities. ADM's draft contained no restrictions in the areas where the city would be required to address the removal of trash from waterways and tributaries. This will create confusion for some citizens who mistakenly believe the city should be required to do this. You will hear from some citizens tonight who incorrectly believe this law should, that the city should be responsible for maintaining all drainage within the city. This proposed language could create an impossible situation for the city, requiring them to violate state law. The city of Hoover's existing permit has language that was mutually agreed upon by the city and ADM. Since there have been no changes in the laws and regulations, there is no legal justification for the new language in this proposed draft permit. In written comments dated November 14, 2022, to Mr. Kitchens, we again provided a detailed summary of the issues which conflict with state law and provided legal support for each. ADM did not provide the city with any response. In a conference call on April 10, 2023, ADM staff and legal counsel again offered no justification for the conflict between the new provisions of the draft permit and state and federal law. During this call, ADM staff informed the city that they would not provide a response to the city's comments. The city was told that they could submit formal comments during the public comment period, which we have done. In written comments from me to Mr. Kitchens on July 14, 2023, we provided additional specific legal support for each portion of the draft permit that we know are impermissible under state law. ADM has not provided any response to the city's comments. As city attorney, I am once again requesting that ADM's legal representatives evaluate the requirements which have been added to the draft permit, which are not included in the city's current permit and which are not in accordance with Alabama law or the federal Clean Water Act. I'm requesting that ADM's legal representatives provide a written legal opinion to the city of Hoover in response to the city's comments to justify the inclusion of each contested requirement. In conclusion, it does not make sense that ADM is seeking to change the parameters of the city's existing permit when state and federal laws and regulations have not changed. We respectfully ask that ADM get their attorneys involved at a legal level and evaluate these new technical requirements which conflict with Alabama law. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, boy. I've got a wagon to take all this out. I now recognize Matthew Smith.
Just do what I can do.
Okay.
Don't worry, I'll hold a little pain. My name is Matthew Smith, code 1837 Apollo Drive. First and foremost, thank you for being here tonight. I know all this is going to regret it, appreciate you. I come to you on, on behalf of myself and my neighborhood, Green Valley, that insurance subdivision. By now, you've seen and heard what residents of the Carr community deal with on a regular basis. Yes, a storm on October 6th was bad. You know, all of us had the same stories. It happened nine times a month that year with the flooding. It wasn't a hundred year storm or 500 year storm. Since then, even more have happened. This has been a reoccurring issue. It's caused residents large amounts of money and property damage. People are literally having to spend their retirement or life savings to repair and live in their homes. That's ridiculous. On October 6th, I had a storm, I had a sewage line burst in my house because of the rain so hard. My newborn son and my wife had to flee my home. And it cost my family thousands. As stated previously in multiple city council meetings, I attempted to communicate this issue with multiple city officials since 2017. And I've been dismissed over and over, just like many residents here in the room tonight. That's undeniably dismissed as a resident, a city official. We need your help as residents. How would you feel if this was your son or your daughter, who started off as a first time home buyer? I bought my wife's grandmother's home. It, it wasn't like that when she grew up in it. But how would you feel if this is your family? You have a newborn child that's having a flea in the middle of the night because you have a sewage snail going through your house? The city has stated they can't work on personal property. Yet our property is being damaged by the drains on Patton Chapel Road that are being diverted downstream. The drainage system was never designed that can hold that amount of water. It needs to be fixed. You're verting water on people's property and it's causing personal property damage. I don't own the drain. Nobody in here owns a drainage pipe or system. We own homes. We literally, I've seen, literally since then, the water, we've seen those benders close so hard, we live in fear behind the rains. I literally send a cat goose up the way. I found glass, snakes. It dams up and sits there, mosquitoes sit there. Not mention other items that I won't say over the microphone. There is literally a stormwater fee we pay as residents, but yet nothing's gone. Businesses are closing. They're getting flooded. And residents are getting flooded left and right. Why would more businesses want to come here when half of Hoover floods every time? On October 6th after that, the city simply put a bandage on what they did, you know, on a few repairs, repairing the road. You see that road they got messed up there? Now, my kids should be able to play in his own yard. He's three years old. He shouldn't say, Daddy, why can't I go outside? I shouldn't have to be worried about a kid getting in that stormwater drain and falling over because it looks like a whitewater rapid going downhill. They sent contractors out to our residents in our neighborhood after, they put easement stakes in the ground. They never came back. Those easement stakes are still sitting in my yard. And they kept telling me, we had a plan, we have a plan. Never heard a word. So, as previously stated, we want it repaired correctly. Somebody needs to take ownership and responsibility in this. So, we want answers and we deserve answers as a residents, as taxpayers, and as voters of the city of Hoover. I want to raise my family here and I love the city of Hoover. I really do. Well, I just gentleman said over here earlier this evening, the problem is easements. Problem is stormwater drains. Not our property. We don't own the drains. Enough is enough and somebody needs to, I'm going to step up and take responsibility. Yes, there are state laws, but Governor Ivy can come here, talk to her about it. When are you doing to talk to them about it? What's the mayor doing to talk to them about it? What's administrator doing to talk to them about it? It's time people step up and do a better job for their residents.
Our neighborhood features big yards. That's why we moved there. Our children and their friends have the run of these yards with plenty of room for swing sets, hide-and-seek, birthday parties, and all the activities that make childhood fun. When we moved to our area of Hoover in 1988, residents told us that flooding was not a concern. We were in a floodplain, but any water over the creek banks was mine.